Welcome y'all here tonight. We're just a couple of minutes away from starting the meeting. Amelia, Kevin, y'all hearing everything okay? Good deal. Kevin, are you still gonna be up for the invocation? If not, I'll go ahead and do it if it's easier for me to. Okay, I'll do it. Yeah, I just invite you to stand, join me in the pledge, and then I'll bring the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this opportunity tonight to serve our citizens. We thank you for each council member, each resident that's here and maybe listening. God, we just ask that you guide us tonight as we make good decisions, decisions that please you and honor you, and we trust you for all that now in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. Welcome again to tonight's regular meeting of the Springdale City Council. This is Tuesday, August 23rd, 2022. We do have large print. Do we have large print agendas up there, Colby?
Sarah has them.
Sarah has them, okay. If anyone needs one, feel free to get one. And now I'll ask our city clerk to start things off by calling the roll.
Mayor Sprouse?
Here.
Brian Powell?
Here.
Amelia Williams?
She owns them.
Jeff Watson?
Here.
Mike Overton?
Here.
Mike Lawson?
Kevin Flores?
Randall Harriman?
Here.
Mark Fugierus?
Here.
Ernest Kate?
Here.
All right, thank you. We're at item five on the agenda, and that's the agenda item each meeting that the council sets aside to hear comments from our citizens. If we have citizens that would like to address the council, we ask that you go to the microphone, clearly state your name and address, and please keep your comments brief, understanding that the council won't take action on anything you have to say tonight. So is there anyone that would like to address the council concerning an item that is not already on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item six, approval of minutes. Council, you've had an opportunity to look over the minutes. If there are no changes or additions, I'd entertain a motion to approve them as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed, same sign? All right. Item seven, and I'm gonna turn our public hearing over to our city attorney, Ernest Kate.
Thank you. Item 13 on the agenda is an ordinance vacating a drainage easement. The statute requires before a council can take action on the ordinance that a public hearing be held, the city clerk has published notice of the public hearing as required by the statute. So is there anyone here that wishes to comment on this item? With that, we'll close the public hearing. We'll take it up as item number 13.
All right, thank you. Item eight is procedural motions. What's your pleasure, council?
Move for A and B.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for eight A and B. Roll call, please.
Flores? Harriman?
Yes, ma'am.
Fugierus?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Overton?
Yes.
Carry seven zero.
All right, thank you. Item nine, employee. We've got an employee recognition. Patsy, I'll meet you up there.
In November of 2020, I got the opportunity to hire a young lady who's been a great asset to our staff, and she's the person I'd like to have recognized tonight, and it's Sharon. Can you come down here? She started workforce as a planning technician, and we didn't scare her off in the first couple of weeks because, as you may know, things in the planning office get kind of crazy from time to time. We have some, all kinds of deadlines and applications and policies and procedures and things that have to be done on a certain amount of time. She's a young lady who picked that up really quickly. She's very intelligent. She picks up things quickly. She's willing to study and learn. So I had the privilege to promote her to plan her too the next year in the summer. She became a great asset for us. She helped us get through the move and figure out what we did with 24 years' worth of files and how we digitize some of that stuff and how we figure out what we have and what we don't have. She's great with people. She deals with people on the phone who calls and says, "I don't want anything next door to me because I'm used to seeing the cows in my neighborhood. What are you gonna do about that?" Or the developer who calls and says, "That's my land. I'm gonna develop like I want to." And there's some engineers in the room, and I'll say, because some of those who don't always follow the rules all the way through, and we have to go back and realign those, and you notice the smile on Jason's face, we go through those processes a lot. She's great at keeping all that kind of stuff together. She's very organized. She works great with all the staff. When I talk to the staff about the idea of recognizing someone, everybody was in favor of Sharon being the first one. She's done so much for helping us all get together. She always has a smile. She's always there to help. She's great with working with other departments, and I hear from that from a lot of people, and I also tell them she's not to be stolen. Y'all keep in mind, I brought her here, and I'm hanging on to her. She's going nowhere else, and I'm very protective of that. So it is with great pleasure. She goes over and above all the time, and she's the person we want to recognize in planning.
I got a little something here. Sharon, you are a joy to work with. I've not heard one cross word said about this lady, and I can't say that about too many people. I know I can't say it about me. So, no, I can't say it about Patsy for sure. But I tell you, you do a great job, and thank you, Patsy, for bringing her forward tonight. Sharon, here's a little something from the city, and just hope you enjoy that, and I look forward to working with you for a long time.
Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate it so much.
Yes, absolutely.
Oh, my gosh. Oh, my gosh.
I do want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor and everyone, for the recognition. I love working for the city of Springdale. And the great work that the planning department does, it's a direct reflection of the department's leadership. So the biggest thank you is to Patsy. Patsy Christie. So thank you very much.
Good deal. Thank you. All right, that's great. All right, we are up at number 10, Planning Commission Report and Recommendation by Patsy Christie. I'm kidding, Patsy, nobody ever says anything bad about you.
I didn't make anyone mad today, I don't think, but you never know. Because sometimes the answer is, I'm sorry, the ordinance won't let you do that. That's not always the answer somebody wants to hear. But anyway, I want to be honest with them and tell them upfront.
Nope, we appreciate that.
The first item on the agenda is a rezoning request to rezone 20 acres at the southwest corner of the intersection of Harbor Avenue and Jean George Boulevard to a planned unit development. Planning Commission reviewed this PUD request and recommends approval of the PUD. And as you know, when we do a PUD, we got lots of information to go through. So I'll spend a little bit of time making sure we get all of that stuff out.
Hold on, Patsy, can we get the guys to, can y'all move the folks on Zoom so we can see what goes up?
Yep.
Thank you.
I'll probably have to turn this on to make it work. Let's see. Okay, there's a piece of property we're talking about. The property currently is owned by Jerry D. and Deborah K. Martens, and it is under contract to be sold to Grace Crossing LLC. So if the PUD is approved tonight, with the Martenses being the owner, it will transfer to the new owners, which will be Grace Crossings LLC. The project is being designed by Civil Engineering and Land Surveyors Engineering Services, Inc. As I said, it's 19.8 acres. The development strategy of this PUD is to develop a site with 46 single-family residential lots in two phases. The entire subdivision will be residential only with no commercial uses proposed or allowed. Okay, let's see, can I move it? Okay, guys, can you move the slides for me? I got one. Wasn't holding my mouth around it, I guess. Okay. As I said, it's 46 single-family residential lots that will be residential only, no commercial. The developer intends to build and then sell or lease homes on all the lots. However, the developer reserves the right to sell vacant lots as market conditions warrant. All homes will face, can you go to the next one too where we can get to the site plan? I think it'll be easier for people to keep up with. Couple more, one more. Next one? There we go. Can you get that box out of the way so you can see what it looks like? Thank you. All homes will face either Jean George Boulevard, Harbor Avenue, or the common POA park area. Lots 39 and 48 of the property, all lots will include attached rear-load garages with capacity for at least two cars with driveway access from Adele Drive, which is a new approved private street which runs along the rear of the lots. There will be no direct access to Jean George or Harbor Avenue of any of the lots. The permitted uses will be use unit one, which is a citywide public use by right, use unit four, which is cultural, recreational, and health facilities, with use unit four being restricted to recreational uses only. No cultural or health facilities will be prohibited. Use unit eight, which are single-family dwellings, use unit nine, which is a zero-lot line, which is a type of housing development, and use unit 34, which is a model home temporary marketing office. Forty-six lots, 19.0 acres, is 2.3 units per acre, which qualifies below what we consider to be low-density residential. The PUD ordinance requires a 15% minimum of green space. In this project, they are providing 14.5 acres of green space, which is 73.2% in green space, with 8.8 acres of that being in the floodway. So you can see what's identified on this drawing as the floodway. The lots will be 36 feet wide by 100 to 120 foot deep. There will be different setbacks for different lots. Lots 1 through 12 will have a bill-to line that is 15 feet from the Harbor Avenue right-of-way, a zero-side setback on the west side and 10 feet on the east side, and 20 feet of the building setback from the improved private street. Lots 13 through 16 will have a 25-foot front setback from Harbor Avenue and Jean George, zero on the north and west sides, 10 on the south and east sides, and a 20-foot building setback from the private street. Lots 17 through 28 will have a 10-foot from Jean George Boulevard, zero on the north, 10 on the south, 20 on the improved street. Lots 29 through 38 will have a 10-foot building setback line, zero on the south, 10 on the north, 20 on the building on the improved street. And lots 40 through 47 will have a 10-foot building setback line on the front, zero on east side, 10 on the west, and 20 in the back. All of those are reflected on the preliminary plat, so we have all of those on the document when it is filed. The large open space area to the southwest portion of the property with a tot lot, a play structure, and picnic benches will be installed in phase one of the project. This will include that 8.8 acres in the floodway. The PUD will include houses with a single side yard with attached rear-load garages accessing the private street. Spacing of houses, reduced front yards, and absence of driveways along Harbor Avenue and Jean George will create inviting space with a strong sense of community. The development is not anticipated to strain any public services or infrastructure in the area. As you know, Harbor Avenue, Jean George has already been approved. Station 7 is located to the west. There's schools. There's a sewer main, water line. All of those are in that area. There is an extension of the Pride of Springdale Trail that is shown on the plat itself to the south of this property, which is on the master street plan, which will allow us, when it's completed all the way through, to connect Harbor Avenue with Springdale High School. The proposed setbacks will allow the single-family homes to be built as the preliminary plat has been filed along with this. It will have a single side yard on one side and a reduced front yards to emulate the look and feel of the homes at Harbor Meadows and Cadence Crossing. They have to vary because of the layout of Harbor Avenue and Jean George, and I just went through all of the setbacks. If you have any questions, we can go back over that. All building lots have that 20-foot building setback from the approved street. This ensures each home will have a driveway measuring at least 20 feet long with, from Adele Drive to the required two-car garage. Each lot will have a zero-foot side setback along one side and a 10-foot side setback along the other. The setback information early in this document and the setback information on the plat indicates which side of each lot is subject to the 10-foot wide side setbacks. The side setbacks will allow the homes to build on the proposed lot with a zero-lot line combination, a configuration on one side, and a proposed lot and provide at least a 10-foot wide yard on the other side. Each 10-foot side setback also serves as a maintenance easement for the adjacent lot to allow the owner of the adjacent lot to complete any necessary repairs or maintenance to the building. And it was pointed out to the developer that that zero-lot line includes overhangs, those kind of things. Again, no commercial or industrial uses are allowed. The exterior walls of all the dwellings, and can you move forward to the pictures? If you go a couple more slides, there's some samples of what the structures are to look like. All exterior walls of the dwellings shall be finished with high-quality materials. Primary building materials will include brick, stone, manufactured stone, wood, and concrete siding such as hardy board. Vinyl siding shall be allowed only above the first floor and shall not exceed 20% of the building's exterior. Sofits and fascia may be covered with steel, vinyl, aluminum, or concrete composition materials. All roof pitches shall be maintained, be a minimum of 612. No metal roofs will be permitted, and roofs shall be covered with singles using architectural composition or better. There are no percentages of brick or stone or any of that. It's to allow some variation in the types of structures to be built. All homes will have a minimum of 800 square feet of heated area on the first floor and 1,300 square feet overall for all floors. All dwellings shall have a maximum square footage of 3,000 square feet overall. As you can see, there were plans and elevations submitted as samples. There is a provision in this to create an ARC for any homes that are to be built other than by the developer as we move forward with this. If that ARC approves the plans, then they're submitted to the city before they can get a building permit. They intend to facilitate marking and selling of the homes with the operation of two model homes at a time in the development. There will never be more than two model homes. There will be no additional signage for that. There will be no separate sales office. There will just be two model homes. Those model homes will operate between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 7:00 p.m. Covenants that are included as part of this PUD are to ensure that there are pleasing appearances. It addresses fences, yard maintenance, trash cans. Fences shall not exceed six feet in height. It shall not protrude past the front or rear of the houses into the front yard or rear yard and shall be constructed of wood or wrought iron. The residents will have access to several amenities. The development will have sidewalks along Harbor and Jean George, as well as a sidewalk along the south side of the improved private street with a connection to the POA park area and to the Pride of Springdale Trail. 14.5 acres of the development is reserved as green space, including a POA park area, lot 49 with a tot lot with play structures and picnic benches. The amenities in lot 49 will be installed during the first phase of the development. The developer will install trees and landscaping in common areas as shown as the landscaping plan, and we have one of those that's included. The builder and developer shall provide a standard two-year warranty for each tree they install, and they do list the type of trees that will be allowed in this PUD. The POA will be responsible for maintenance of all common areas, including the detention pond, the improved private street, and streetlights along the improved private street. The improved private street for real access to home is the only proposed street to be constructed in the subdivision. It will be 29 feet wide with a 35-foot wide access easement. The street will be inverted with a six-foot sidewalk and parking provided along one side. Typical street section is provided on the preliminary plat. All streetlights along the improved private street will be private and maintained by the POA. The project includes one street connector to Harbor Avenue and one to Jean George Boulevard. Signage for the subdivision will consist of two monument signs. One shall be placed, shall be located adjacent to the Harbor Avenue right-of-way on the west of Lot 1 and installed during the construction of phase one. The other sign will be located in a sign easement at the southeast corner of Lot 27 and installed during construction of phase two. A sign easement will be provided for each sign on the final plat. The exterior of the sign will be constructed with primary stone, brick, and metal. The developer will install landscaping around the sign in accordance with the landscaping plan. The developer intends to begin construction as soon as, as quickly as possible once the PUD and construction plans are approved. It's anticipated that construction of the subdivision's infrastructure in the first phase will be complete within 12 to 18 months of city council approval of the PUD, with the second phase completed in additional 12 to 18 months. The covenants that are attached with this and become part of this PUD document includes a definition of the common areas, indicates that all fences have to be constructed of wood or wrought iron. No other fences will be allowed. No, in no event will a fence be built which would detract from the appearance of the, or obstruction of the entry signs to the property. All private fences shall be constructed so that the framing shall be toward the inside of the owner's lot and shall be constructed at a maximum height of six feet to maintain uniformity. Any fence once constructed must be maintained by the property owner who had it constructed or their successor in interest. No double fences will be allowed. No fences shall protrude past the front of a home into the front yard or past the rear of a home into the rear yard. No noxious or offensive activities are allowed on any lot or parcel. No other signs except the ones we just talked about, except for real estate signs when the property is listed for sale, provided, however, that these restrictions don't apply to the developer during construction, and they don't apply to campaign signs. No animals are allowed to be kept on the lot except the usual household pets, which shall be kept reasonably confined so as not to become a nuisance, and all owners shall comply with the applicable laws, ordinances, and regulations concerning animals. All owners in the PUD has to have trust services required by the city of Springdale. No vehicle access to any lot is on the perimeter except from designated streets or roads within the subdivision, which means you can't come off of Jean George or anything like, or Harbor to the front of the structures. There's no drilling, refining, coring, or mining operations. No communication towers or structures are installed on any lot except that satellite dishes may be installed only on the rear roof of a dwelling. Rear roof being the roof toward the improved private street. It shall not exceed the height of the lowest roof ridge of such dwelling. Solar panels within the subdivision must be installed only on the roof of a dwelling. Any charging stations for electric vehicles must be located within garage. No exterior charging stations shall be allowed. Parking shall be allowed along the south and west sides of the improved private street, but overnight parking along the street shall be prohibited. No parking, no vehicles may be parked in the front side or rear yards at any time. No semi-trailer trucks or commercial vehicles are allowed to park in the subdivision, either on the street or on the lots provided. However, this restriction shall not apply to the developer during construction. Moving trucks shall be allowed on a short-term basis. Recreational and camping vehicles, trailers, and boats cannot be stored or parked on lots. We already went over the minimum and maximum square footage. It's put in the covenants again as well. All plans for improvements to be constructed on each lot should be first submitted or reviewed by the ARC if it's anyone other than the developer on the front end. We talked about the exterior walls and the pitches. All lots are maintained, maintained mode, and kept free of noxious weeds, whether they are improved or unimproved. If an owner allows grass to grow such that it is more than four inches high, the developer or the association shall have the right, but not the obligation, to have it mowed without giving notice to the owner, and shall charge $75 or the amount it costs developer, association to have it mowed, whichever is greater. Our lots are subject to the easements on the plat. The covenants run with the land, and they are binding for a period of 30 years. After 30 years, there's an amendment process, but the city has to approve any amendments to the covenants. No person who is required to register as a sex offender is allowed in the subdivision in accordance with the Sex Offender Registration Act of 1997 and as it amended any others that are in existence. They are establishing a homeowners association called the Grace Crossing Homeowners Association, and there is a procedure how that is to be set up. It allows them to create a lien on the property for assessments that aren't paid or dues like that. It sets up for the purpose for the assessments are to be used for, for the use and enjoyment of the common properties, the private streetlights, the private street, the detention pond, for any repair, replacement, and modifications for the cost of labor, equipment, materials management, and supervision, any expenses related to any of the common properties. The annual assessment is set now at $300 per lot, and it is, there's a procedure on how it is prorated depending when you buy the lot. It allows for the creation of special assessments based on action of the POA. How those annual assessments are handled, what is quorum is needed for the, and I go through all those details, but there's a standard kind of details. The duties of the board of directors. The developer is providing seed money. Upon recording the final plat for the subdivision, the developer will pay an initial $2,500 into the account of the association to cover any expenses incurred prior to establishment and stabilization of the subdivision. There is discussions about how the effective non-payment is on any of those lots and how all those procedures are taken care of. The associations have the responsibility for maintaining common properties, including mowing and maintaining all common properties, the detention pond, the private street with private streetlights, the monument signs, and landscaping. And then it outlines the enjoyment or the use of the members of the rights they have, any violations in the procedures, how this is to be adopted. That's the short and sweet. If you have any questions, I can go back over some of the details if anybody has anything.
Move or disbid, adopt?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the ordinance. Any other questions from the council before I open it up?
I have some.
Okay, go ahead, Joe.
So, Patsy, you said there's 14 point something percent of green space? Is that what you said?
There is 14.5 acres designated in the PUD as green space, of which 8.8 acres of that is actually in the floodway.
Okay.
But it's all common open area. It's all common open space.
Okay. And from the plat or picture, whatever you call it, plat, I guess, the first picture that you had, the first slide?
Uh huh.
The property along Jean George?
Okay.
You want the one with the, with the lots?
That shows the after lodge.
Yeah, there you go.
The property along Jean George, that's open common area?
No, that's actually street right-of-way.
It's actually, it's actually city-owned, is it not?
It's city-owned, street right-of-way.
So we will mow that part?
Correct.
Yeah, unless we can work out something.
And then there's a fence at the back of those lots.
Right.
There would be fences. Okay.
And then you can see the landscaping along the creek in that area to kind of set the perimeters of that before you get to the floodway. I'm sorry, the detention pond is that next area between there and the floodway. I think you can, Jason, can you? It's on the second page. Okay. See that? It's in that area just past where that squiggle comes around with the trees, and it's in that area right in there. This has a pointer on it.
Is that a property that's part of this PUD?
Yeah, that's part of the PUD too.
Okay. And the crossed areas, those are, that's a flood plain?
Mm-hmm. Floodway. The crosshairs area is the floodway. The long lines are, that's the flood plain itself, Jason? Oh, other way around.
Long paths and floodway and crosses.
Is what?
Yeah, you're gonna have to come this way.
So the floodway, the floodway runs along the creek, and then the piece to the south where the pond is, is the flood zone.
Okay, and that pond is on property that's part of the PUD?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And, I don't know who this question's for, but you said it's a private drive, private street, I mean?
Yes.
And is it gonna be gated?
No, it's not to be gated, but it is an approved private street. The only way you can subdivide it and put lots on it either has to be an approved private street built to city standards, or it has to be a dedicated public street, and they're gonna keep it as a private street.
Okay.
And the POA is set up to maintain it.
And are we responsible for the portion that crosses our right-of-way along Jean George?
Oh, you mean on the other?
Need to go back to the... Need to go back to the picture before that, I think. Yeah, there.
Well, that's in city right of way.
So that is our responsibility, that part, but their building?
Right. Their building is part of their connection to the street, but it is across city right of way. Yes.
So we'd be responsible for that drive to get to basically the fence?
Up to the property line, correct, yes.
Are these houses facing Gene George and, and?
They're facing Gene George and Harbor with the back along the private street and then the others on the other side of the street are facing toward the common area.
Okay.
So when you drive down through the street, the private street, you will see garages.
Okay, so there's garages on the backside.
So how do the garages work? You're driving, you're driving off of Harbor and Gene George into the garage?
No.
You're driving into the street that runs between those set of lots and each, it's like the alleyways that you see at Harbor and other places. It's just wide enough to be a, an approved private street for fire apparatus and that kind of stuff to get in there because some of the houses are faced out into the common area and not onto a street.
All garages on both sides of that private street face the street.
Face the private street.
Face the private street, right.
But that doesn't look like the picture of the houses that you showed us.
Can you go to the elevation?
Yeah, that's, that's a picture from them, from the, from Gene George and?
So the garages are in the back?
Yeah. Yes.
So, so how do you get to, how do you get to the garage?
Private street.
The garages, the garages in the back off the street. You pull up, which you drive, when you drive down Gene George or Harbor, that's what you're gonna see along the street. When you pull in. When you pull into the street, you will see the garages on the other side. The houses that are on the other side of the street, you will see the garages, they face out into that common open area, not onto a street.
Okay.
So to access those houses, there'll be?
Well, I guess that's up to you whether you want backdoor guests or front door guests. There's additional parking spaces along the street for guests. And yes, you would, you would, you could not access any of the houses from the front because you can't park along Gene George, you can't park along Harbor and get out and walk to the front of the house. You've got to drive in there, park behind it, and I would assume there will be an access down the side so you can walk around to the front door, or you knock on the back door and do it from there.
Jason, could you expound?
So there, there will be a back door and a garage.
So to go into the front of the house?
To get to the front, I mean, the front's, you know, a nice facade along the two street fronts. Yes, it will have a front door, but generally all access will happen from the rear.
Most people are gonna access through that back door.
Yeah. It'll be through the, the rear entry. There, there will be a door, a standard front door looking door there along the back.
So I misunderstood then, back to the picture I think that's showing up, and along Gene George, we have our easement, our right of way that you're saying we're responsible for, and then you have the property line of the PUD. That will not be a fence there because that's, that's the front of the house.
There'll be a fence across the house, you know, sitting back across the house, but it won't be in front, on the property. It'll be along the front of the house, like the picture kind of show.
If you go to that picture, you can see where the, where the fences are gonna be. See the fences, see where the fences are on those?
Is that the front or what we call?
That's the front of the house. You will see that when you drive down Harbor. You will see the front door, a fence, the, the front door to the next one.
Is there any kind of sidewalk to the front door?
No.
So it's just a front door with a porch, but no sidewalk to it?
Correct.
You guys sit down in your front porch and nobody will walk in.
Yep.
Or back porch or whatever you wanna call it.
So, I understood there's gonna be 46 single-family residents. Which of these numbered lots, Jason, will not have a resident on it?
Just the, the POA lot, which is 39. And then obviously the main.
There you go.
The main green space.
Just 39?
Yes. And there's some odd-shaped lots in there. We checked some square footages, make sure we get the square footage somewhere. There's, there's a, there's a sidewalk on Harbor, yes.
Well, there's a sidewalk in Gene George too.
Those were both built with the street improvements that are already there. There will be a sidewalk along Gene George and it's actually a wider sidewalk because there's the west side as a, as a side path. And people can walk down through there. And I don't know what's gonna keep people from walking across that sidewalk down to the house if they want to. There's nothing to keep them except you get to the fence when you get to the front of I think there's, there's, I mean, far enough away from there, there ought to be enough room to get a left turn out of there. I don't know that we talked about, no one said anything about being right out only.
It's, it's not within the movement of that traffic circle or that divided.
So, I thought, I heard you say, Patsey, then, as well?
Here, let me turn my. All right. Patsey, I thought I heard you say there's a minimum square footage of 3,000. Is that what I heard?
The square footage that's established in this is 800 square feet of heated space on the first floor and 1,300 square feet overall with a maximum square footage of 3,000 square feet.
Oh, maximum of 3,000, okay.
It's minimum of 21 and maximum. There are some designated parking spaces that are, that is identified on that street for people who are visiting to have a place to park. And it's designated on the plat which side and in what locations those, those can happen.
And these will all have two-car garages?
They will all have two-car garages.
So on those elevations, I'm looking at lots 36, 37, and 38. So the, the front door of what we would see on that drawing is gonna face that lot 40. Is that right?
Yes. There's a sidewalk in there that leads to that green space along Lot 40 to the south.
So they'll, they'll be the only ones to have a sidewalk at the front door, huh? Did you get your name in early?
Tell you.
Okay, we've got a motion to second. Anyone in the audience need to ask anything or give input? All right. Other questions, council, before we vote? All right, we have a motion to second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Can we call it?
Oh, we gotta go, oh, that's right. About to make, I was, I was giving you, I was gonna make it easy on all of you. Roll call Denise.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
No.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores.
Carry 6-1, does have an emergency clause.
The emergency clause bid up.
Second.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Emergency clause, carry 7-0.
All right.
The next item is a request to rezone .63 acres located at 2305 South Thompson from General Commercial District C2 to Large Product Retail Sales C6. Planning Commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from General Commercial District C2 to Large Product Retail Sales District C6 and declaring an emergency."
Most of the other one, so we're going to C2, correct?
It's across the street. It has had a conditional use for a automobile sales on this lot for quite some time with a limited number of vehicles that could be placed on there. They're asking to rezone it to a C6 so they can use the entire site.
So that they can use the entire spot?
Yeah, and not be limited to the number of vehicles that the planning commission limited it to. At the time, they weren't using all the front there. If they want to expand it, they're gonna have to pave some area and, and do something to be able to park more vehicles on there than what they have on there now, but. When, as in, when did they get the conditional use? At least a couple of years ago, if not longer.
So at one time we had, remember when we had that issue about parking more than two cars where one couldn't be moved or something?
We still have that, that's still a condition.
Yeah, but we kind of had a big push on that some years ago and, and that was an issue here, but they did a pretty good job of complying with that.
It just limits them to the number of vehicles they can have on the site, you know. Now, they still have to comply with the same, the same regulation that you can't park them three-deep where you have to move one to move the other. That, that doesn't change and in order to use more area, they're probably gonna have to pave more area, but that's an expense they didn't want to take on last time.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further comment or questions? Anyone in the room? Okay, roll call please.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
The emergency clause bid up.
Second.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, carry 7-0.
The next item is a request to rezone .12 acres located at 2286 South Maestry Road. The request is to rezone the property from A1 to SF2. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to low, medium-density, single-family residential district SF2 and declaring an emergency."
Just our city limits are in our planning area, Patsey?
It's in the city limits. We couldn't zone it if it was outside the city limits.
Just one of why it's Maestry Road, is that?
I don't think we ever changed it. We have, we have several things that are dressed off of Maestry Road because that's.
Do we?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Move the ordinance, be passed and approved.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Any further questions or comments? I guess it's Tawny Town on one side, isn't it?
Right.
Okay.
Everything that's color on the map is in Springdale, everything is not, well, it's color, but it's not zoning color.
So that's why, that's probably why we've not, yeah, it's not really ours to change.
Yeah.
All right. Anybody in the room? No? Okay, roll call.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
The emergency clause bid up.
Second.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, carry 7-0.
The next item is a request to rezone .72 acres located at 1443 West Sunset. The request is to rezone the property from SF2 to C2. And this is kind of a weird situation. I think when the zoning map was developed several many years ago, there was a line drawn across there to create commercial along 412. The rest of it was SF2 and it kind of split a piece of property. It wasn't done based on property lines, so this is just to rezone that little piece so that it is in connection with the, the commercial to the, to the north. The planning commission recommends approval of this rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from low, medium-density, single-family residential district SF2 to General Commercial District C2 and declaring an emergency."
Please the ordinance be adopted.
Can you change that to a second? All right. Any other comments or questions? Denise.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Emergency clause bid up.
Second.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, carry 7-0.
The next request is to rezone .67 acres located at 735 Oak Grove Road to rezone it from Agricultural District A1 to General Commercial District C2. Planning Commission recommends approval of the rezoning request. The title of the ordinance reads, "An ordinance submitting ordinance number 3307, the same being the zoning ordinance of the city of Springville, Arkansas and the plat pertaining thereto by rezoning certain lands from Agricultural District A1 to General Commercial District C2 and declaring an emergency."
One, there's an island that runs through there, isn't there?
I'm sorry?
Isn't there an island that runs through there that's?
That's in Silicon Elm Springs.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's, it's just to.
South.
South of this, yeah. There's just a little piece in there.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion to second to approve the ordinance. Any other comments or questions?
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
The emergency clause bid up.
Second.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, carry 7-0.
The next item is a request for the, for approval of the conditional use for a tandem lot split located at 2147 Reed Avenue. Planning Commission reviewed this tandem lot request and recommends approval of the conditional use. Title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a conditional use for grant in Katy Day at 2147 Reed Avenue set forth in ordinance number 4030 and is a conditional use for a tandem lot split."
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
All right, we have a motion to second. Any further questions? Roll call.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.[1760.04]
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
And the last item is a request for a waiver of street improvements and sidewalks in connection with a single-family home that's being built at 8577 West Gibbs. Planning Commission recommends approval of the waiver request with option one, which grants the waiver. The title of the resolution reads, "A resolution approving a waiver of street improvements, drainage, curb goods, and sidewalks set forth in ordinance number 3725 to Whitney Riley in connection with 8577 West Gibbs Road, a single-family dwelling."
Does this only affect Gibbs?
Yes, there's already a sidewalk on Harbor. But the house is actually going to face onto Gibbs. The house actually faces onto Gibbs.
Okay.
I'm making a motion for option one.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve with option one. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Denise.
Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams.
Carry 6-1, option one.
All right. Thank you. Item 11, Finance Committee by Chairman Jeff Watson.
I'll go ahead and take it, even though I wasn't at the committee meeting, your honor, your honor. Mayor, your honorable mayor.
Well, thanks, Jeff.
It's a habit. But I'll, I'll ask Ernest if he will address this resolution. I'll read the title to the resolution.
Okay.
"A resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle a condemnation lawsuit wherein Stacy Perry is defendant, project number 18BPS1 track 36." It's my understanding that the committee did forward this resolution for settlement to the council with recommendation for approval.
Yes, that's, that's correct, your honor. This is a, this is a, call it a COVID case. This is the last remaining case from the Gene George project. Got bumped down the road several times because of COVID and been visiting with Ms. Perry, who's the, the property owner in this case, and the proposed settlement would be an additional $5,562, which kind of splits, splits it down the middle between what the city's revised estimate of compensation was, what she was originally requesting. The reason it's coming to you now is because it's actually set for trial next month, so we want to try and get this one settled and taken care of since it's the last one.
Move the resolution pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other questions?
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right, thank you. Uh, item 12, Parks and Rec Committee, Mike Lawson is not here tonight. Would somebody like to take that? It's the one item.
I'll take it, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Brian.
So last Monday, the Parks and Recreation Committee met, had a one resolution before it, and it was forwarded with recommendation for approval. I read the title of the resolution. "A resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a grant from the Walton Family Foundation to support the construction of Luther George Park." And, uh, Patsy, you brought that up. Can you give us some insight on that?
The city was invited to submit an application to the Walton Family Foundation to help support the construction of Luther Port, Luther George Park. As you know, a steering committee was appointed by the Downtown Springville Alliance. They've been in the process of, of soliciting support, donations for this. This 3.1 million that would, if you accept the grant, will put us within $848,000 of the total amount we need to build this project.
Which is about 12, a little over 12 million.
Right at $12 million. This is one of those projects that has had a lot of community support. The donations were launched by an anonymous donation of 3.1 million to start it off, and we have donations from several different organizations and families in the city. A lot of the money has already been collected. It's been pledged. We, you know, we're going through the process of collecting all that. If the plan, if the council approves this grant tonight, we would be looking to break ground on the project on October the 7th. It will be done in two phases. The first phase will be the construction, which is within the amount of money we've already raised. The 700, or the $800,000 includes equipment and playground equipment and stuff that, that's not needed at the very beginning, so we can go ahead and get started with the dirt work. There's a lot of dirt work and utilities that need to be moved. And that gives the steering committee an opportunity to raise the remaining money so that we can move forward with this project. I can tell you, there's a lot of community support for this project. It, it's, it's really encouraging to see when you look at the list of people who've, who've donated, and that will be, that will be brought forward when we get to the, to the groundbreaking so that you'll know who all supported this project. But it is hometown people supporting a project in Downtown Springville.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the resolution. Any other comments or questions? Okay, Denise.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yeah.
Overton.
Yes.
Yes.
Carry 7-0.
All right, thank you. Item 13, I'm going to turn over to our city attorney, actually, the next two.
Thank you.
Ernest will have.
This is an ordinance releasing, vacating, and abandoning a drainage easement located on property in Springville, Washington County, Arkansas, declaring emergency for other purposes. This is a property located at 3064 South Ole Missouri Road. Kind of a misnomer, there's actually a development going on on this property, and they're actually relocating the drainage easement. We have to vacate this before they can do that.
Move the ordinance be adopted.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to adopt the ordinance. Any other questions or comments? All right, Denise.
Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Fugiruse.
Yes, ma'am.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, carry 7-0. The last item is an ordinance authorizing the city clerk to file a cleanup lien for the removal of overgrown brush and debris on property located within the city of Springville, Arkansas and declaring emergency. These is, uh, these are at 407 South Cleveland and 283 Aaron Place.
Move the ordinance pass.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve the ordinance. Uh, is there anyone here that need to address either of these properties? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for the vote.
Powell.
Yes.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes, ma'am.
Move the emergency clause be adopted.
Second.
Williams. Watson.
Yes.
Overton.
Yes.
Flores. Harriman.
Yes, ma'am.
Fugiruse.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Both the ordinance emergency clause, carry 7-0.
All right, thank you. Item 15, we need to discuss, uh, council needs to set a, a date for the next committee meeting. Our, uh, we're up against one of those funny months where if we did the, what we normally do, the first Monday for committee and the second Tuesday for council, uh, committee would be the night before the council meeting. So, and, well, and if we move it, that's true. If we move it back a week, well, actually, no, you're right. You're right, Ernest. It would be Labor Day. The 6th is Planning Commission. We've got an extra week. So we could do, go ahead and do it the 29th. And then have, then we would have council on the 13th.
What now? Oh, the 29th of August?
Yeah, we could do, we could do the first committee meeting next Monday, just like we would normally do. And then, then we have a, we'd just have an extra week between committee and council.
Well, does that give everybody time to?
Yeah, we'll, well, if we do, if we do it next Monday, we would have the same amount of time we always have. The only thing I would bring up, and Jeff, this would be your committee, it would be, it would be finance. We are, we do expect, uh, James could not be here tonight, Public Works, but we do expect James to open bids on the Sanders Trailhead that Monday, the 29th. So what I would ask, if we're going to do that, if we're going to have committee on the 29th, I'd ask that we could go ahead, we could get you the information on the 29th, if, if it's a good bid and we plan to bring it forward, where we could discuss it Monday night, and if y'all aren't comfortable, if y'all aren't comfortable forwarding it, uh, to council with that shorter time to look at it, then it, maybe we could forward it without a recommendation. But I'd like to go ahead, I'd like to be able to vote on it if we're moving it forward at the next council meeting, which will be the, whatever that is, 13th. That would be the only caveat to, I just wanted to give you a heads up on that, that we may be, we may be bringing forward, we could even put it on the agenda, but you wouldn't have the information until after we open bids on Monday.
Does that affect the trip?
When will the bids be opened?
Monday morning. I don't know what time, but it's Monday morning. And again, you'd, plus, after you, if you forwarded it to council, you'd still have two weeks to look over it before it went to council. We're getting, we're getting, uh, bids on, uh, with concrete, going back with concrete so that we won't have that, we won't ever have to replace it again. So, and actually, Colby, I think James told you, looks like concrete's going to be just as, just as cheap as, or about the same price as asphalt. So it's kind of a, that part's kind of a no-brainer, but we hope to get a good price on it. Y'all want to have it on the 29th?
Yes, sure.
Okay. All right. Good deal. That's, uh, that's all we had. Uh, any other comments from council members?
Well, I had one written down, but you kind of brought it up in your last discussion. I was going to ask about the trailheads. And, because we never really said what we were going to do, right?
No, we didn't, because James, well, what, the way we left it, I think, was that we were going to try and get you prices both ways, concrete and asphalt, but now that James has determined that, as, as the market is right now, we can get concrete just as cheap, we're just going to bring it.
But he's only looking at Sanders right now?
He's, we've got, I think we're advertised for both of them, haven't we? But I don't know if we'll have, he mentioned Sanders. Maybe, maybe we're not going to have, uh-
But it's in the process.
Yeah, it's in the process. We definitely need, we'll have to do both of them. Excuse me? It will be bids for both? Okay, good deal. Don't know who said that, but, okay. James ought to know. Any other comments? Any other, oh. Yes, we got you, maybe you go ahead. Okay, the last word I got is that, of course, we've been, the holdup has been, I'll just call them out, has been Cox, and they've, and moving their, uh, moving their lines, get them underground so we can get the, get the poles out of the way. I think, unless something's changed, Ben, you heard, I think the plan is to get the poles out tomorrow, the next day, hopefully?
Thursday is the, is the time we hope to have the poles removed.
Okay, we hope to have the poles removed Thursday, which will allow them to finish the paving. And, uh, and then on the south end, um, I think they're really close there, too. So, but we don't have a, we don't have a date, Ben, are we still looking at early, early September, late August?
I think, I think it's probably going to be mid to the third week of September.
Oh, okay. All right. Amelia, Ben said they're probably looking at middle, middle part of September to have them both open. Yes, good deal, thank you. I just got that today, the invite to that, so. Yeah, we'll see you, see you up north.
You can't say y'all in DC.
Thanks, Kevin, we appreciate you, and we'll see you, we'll see you soon. All right, any comments from city attorney?
No, sir.
I have nothing. Do we have a motion to adjourn? We are adjourned, thank you all very much.